Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 14th meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine laws of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 10th, 2020, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Charlie, Mr. Gregory Gillette.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas. Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Maroon.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer.
Here.
Mrs. Stats.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Trahia. And Dr. Sasan. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. We'll hold the Pledge of Allegiance until we start the regular portion of the meeting, but for now, we need to move into executive session. So whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 70 of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is unaffiliated contracts and the matters to be discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon and Dr. Harris. Your pick, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, we are moving into executive session. We will return at 7:30. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Charlie, Mr. Gregory Gillette.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas. Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Maroon.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer.
Here.
Mrs. Stats.
Here.
Ms. Trahia.
Here.
And Dr. Sasan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation,
under God, indivisible,
liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have correspondence as provided. And then the superintendent's report. Dr. Antounis?
Thank you, Dr. Sasan. So, in case nobody heard, we are currently under a winter storm warning and monitoring the potential for significant accumulation of snow along with strong winds. This is just a reminder that we communicate with local authorities, transportation, and the township to monitor and respond to all weather-related issues. Wednesday is our fully remote day, so we ought to have very few issues on Wednesday. Should the district be closed for in-person instruction on Thursday due to inclement weather, the district will go to a fully remote instructional model just like we do on Wednesday. The remote model affords the district to count the day toward the mandated 180-day requirement. During this time, students and teachers will continue to use Google Classroom just as usual, and all students are expected to participate in remote learning. Should we pivot to the fully remote model on Thursday, all district facilities will be closed. Power outages or brown outs may impact connectivity. Students ought to reach out to their teachers should they encounter issues impacting their ability to access posted work. Due to the nature of the storm potential, it is possible that local power outages will impact instruction or access to instruction. Staff continue to work and plan for students in this capacity. Should instruction be interrupted for power outages or other internet issues, an alert regarding pivoting to a full closure will be sent. Please also remember that because instruction will be remote but continuous, all families and staff need to complete the COVID daily screener each day. More information will be forthcoming regarding food distribution, and our intent is to provide details by the close of business tomorrow if at all possible. As you are aware, Google experienced a worldwide disruption of services for which you ought to have received the school messenger. Fortunately, it lasted for less than an hour, and we and everyone else in the world were able to be up and running pretty quickly. Whether one agrees with the decision to do so or not, we are doing our best to keep schools open and operational. We will continue to monitor staffing issues and student needs to determine if and when individual classes, schools, or the district need to be closed. This may occur from one day to the next and even within a day, so please plan accordingly. I am very excited and thrilled to announce the 2020-2021 Governors Educators of the Year. The following teachers were chosen as Teachers of the Year: Lauren Peterson in Amsterdam, Tricia Townsend for Otten Road, Joyce Bornaro at HES, Lynn Mound at HHS, Kim Lopez at the Middle School, Caitlin Sanyay at Sunnymead, Kathleen DiGeralimo in Triangle, Amy Regan for Woodfern, and Peter McLaughlin for Woods Road. Our education service professionals are Melissa Rice from Amsterdam, Linda Garolian from Otten Road, Taylor Liziski from HES, Jennifer Amponin from the high school, Tina Enjolakis from the middle school, Elizabeth Aleo from Sunnymead, Yoreen Koval from Triangle, Shirley Mustaski from Woodfern, and Corinne Magliaro from Woods Road. As we traditionally do, we will recognize each of the recipients at an upcoming board meeting in the new year, but I'm so excited to announce these, so this is wonderful news. Congratulations to everybody. I would like just to take a moment to thank our three board members: Mrs. Judith Haas, Dr. Anne Harris, and Dr. Lorraine Sasan for their many years of service to the Jinson Hillsborough. During their tenure as board members, the district has seen enormous areas of growth, and each of you has been integral in the advances we have made. Many will agree that the last three years brought moments of tremendous accomplishment, many challenging budget decisions, and we continue to navigate a global health crisis. Your dedication, support, and willingness to devote countless hours never wavered. On both a personal and professional level, I'm so grateful for the time we spent together and will always be so appreciative of your wise counsel and patient advice. But more importantly, and on behalf of the entire board, we are so grateful and thank you for your contribution to the Hillsborough community. On your table, you'll notice there's a small token of appreciation memorializing your time as a board member. That is the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antounis. We have several committee reports, but before that, I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the teachers and the educational service professionals that were listed. I know many of you personally, and I'm sure all of you are very deserving of the honor. So with the three committee reports, can I ask Mrs. Haas to go first?
Okay. Can everybody hear me? I hope. Okay. We started our meeting doing my least favorite thing to do in 15 years, which is the school calendar for 2021 and '22. And basically, we went through three different versions of the calendar. There are a couple of issues with the, you know, start date and end date, among which includes whether or not we have a graduation venue, if a graduation is to be held. And I guess after today's little technology event, I was wondering whether at some point we might be able to get rid of snow days, but now we have to worry about whether or not we need Google outage days. So there are other things that we might have problems with going forward. But anyway, I guess that is something that the next education committee will have to pick up. And we also discussed the AP score summary, which I'm very happy to report. These are the scores from spring 2020. We looked at the number of exams that were given. It was 1,292, which I think is close to, if not a record. A lot of kids are taking AP classes and doing very well because I think 93% receive scores of 3, 4, or 5. And that's a wonderful accomplishment, and I'm very proud of all of our kids for that. And basically, what happened with the AP scores, with the AP classes last year, where the tests did not include material after March, which I believe was the fair thing to do. And pleased that kids weren't expected to do things that they shouldn't have been expected to know. But anyway, we also had a wonderful non-agenda discussion about how much we all enjoyed being on the education committee. And I have to say, after all these years, I've been on the education committee from the very beginning, and I have to say, this was a wonderful committee. There was wonderful cooperation, collaboration, camaraderie. And everybody had wonderful ideas that we shared and batted around, and it was always a pleasure, even though it never was an hour and a half. And I'd just like to thank Dr. Sasan, Dr. Harris, Mrs. Maroon, and most of all, my partner in crime, Lisa Antounis, and now Kim Feltry for making the education committee as robust as it was because we got a lot of very good things done over the years, and I thank you all for your contributions. And what can I say? I'll have to come back and visit sometime. So thank you very much. And oh, yes, not to forget Kate Shaughnessy and Mrs. Volpe, who took minutes for us and tried to capture all the back and forth and everybody talking over each other. So really appreciated all of their help. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Gillette, would you like to give the operations committee meeting minutes, please?
Sure, thank you. Operations Committee met on December 9th. We had a good meeting. We started off with our board attorney, Mr. Lapiera, and he would put to us on the ongoing disputes, I would say, or issues we have with Honeywell over the final disposition, I would call it, of the ESIP project from about five years ago and going forward. There are some legal issues with it, potential litigation. I want to get ahead of myself, but potential litigation. And Mr. Lapiera had the recommendation that we contract with a special counsel who specials -- I'm going to use the word twice -- specializes. The special counsel specializes in exactly this type of litigation between maybe a contractor or something that didn't -- you know, where we're alleging didn't fulfill all the obligations of the project with public entity like we are. And he has someone in mind for that. And we can have this -- after we've moved this report or after we're done with committee reports, we can have discussion about that. But if the board is good with that, we have a resolution tonight, which would be in addition to the agenda, I think, after -- I think it would be after 11.5. It would be like 11.6, I guess. Jane, is that correct?
Yeah.
You're the math teacher. I want to make sure. There's a math. All right. So yeah, so we would have that tonight if you wanted to do that. So it's a serious subject. We can't -- Our board -- our architect of record, Mr. Wozni, is still having issues with the building maintenance system. We can't get into the system that's installed there now. Honeywell's holding that up. And if this can all be resolved, it would be good. Besides, with what we're alleging, we've had some expenses that we shouldn't have had to have had, let's put it like that, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which we may -- which we're looking to recoup that. The outlay for a special counsel will be in the low tens of thousands, at least to begin, and we would see from there how it goes. So I'm still very confident in that, and that was the first thing. That took a lot of the discussion. We talked a little bit about the treasurer's school monies, about having someone that's currently one of our employees. I reported on this before, so I'm not going to report on it again, but we're talking about that. Become the treasurer's school monies. So I said Mr. Rosny was at the meeting. He gave us an update on the referendum projects from the summer. It's the same report as he gave last time. They are really, really, really close now to being completely done. I only used two reelies, I think, at the last meeting, so I'm going to put three reelies in there because that's basically what his report was. But he did have some new things to report, that the construction -- the general construction project bids for the next phase are due on December 22nd. So that's going to be exciting, and I'll be in touch with Mr. Mahmood, I think, over the break, if we have such a thing, to find out how those bids went. So that's good. Also, we reported that -- I don't know if he reported this, but it's coming up later here, that the security money from the state that was approved a couple of years ago is finally starting to get ready to be trickled out, and that'll be -- our share would be something around $400,000, I believe. This is money that we're eligible for and be put towards the construction of the security vestibules at the schools. So that's an important -- that's something important to have. And you have to now, I think, go through a little process of making sure that you get it, and Mr. Wozni, board architect, is working on that. We also got an update on the HES playground, and there is no update because it's not fixed. So it's a sad update. One of these meetings, I'm going to come in here and I'm going to tell you that it's all good and there's kids playing on it. I don't know what year that will be, hopefully soon. Mr. DeLuca advised us on the ongoing updates to mechanical and ventilation systems. Three new HVAC units have been installed at the high school. They're operating independently, and they're operational and working well. In his review of exhaust fans around the district, identified initially 60 that were needed to be replaced. And then, you know, that's the initial. Those are the ones in most serious need of replacement, and 37 of those have been replaced. Most of those went to the high school and the middle school. Then we had a discussion about activity fees. We had an email inquiry about activity fees. In fact, we got another one today, I think, about activity fees. So after our discussion, we determined that the activities that are ongoing justify the collection of the activity fee. And we're leaving it up to the administration to make sure that those activities are ongoing in a way that justifies the collection of the fee. That's the best way I can put it. So clubs are meeting. If they're meeting in a different way, via Zoom or something like that, well, that's the way it's going to be. And, you know, it does kind of make logic. I mean, it has some logic to it because, you know, we're charging taxpayers and their neighbors the same amount of money this year to send their kids to school. So, you know, we're not going to give a discount on the activity fee either. So there is a logic in it. And, you know, school's been very much different over the past several months. And finally, we had a donation of some masks. And I forget where we got those from.
From the county.
Oh, okay. It says from the -- I didn't know if they were distributed by the county, or they came from the county, but
The county.
Okay, so some masks that could be provided to staff. These are reusable. And Dr. Antounis is working on a plan for how that's going to be distributed, if and when it's distributed. And that's it. Our whole meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Pulsifer, would you like to report on the HR committee meeting, please?
Certainly, Dr. Sasan. The Human Resources Committee met last Thursday, December 10th. We began with a discussion of some personnel matters. We finalized the remaining outstanding contracts for some directors in the district. We also discussed, as was also discussed in operations, about the treasurer's school monies and how to manage the stipend for that role as it happens, either inside or outside the district. We then moved on to review of policies regarding use of social networking sites. At last week's meeting, we had those for first reading, and there was some discussion from last week's meeting that we've incorporated in the policies as they were on the agenda tonight for second reading. We also had some staffing updates. We discussed a personnel disciplinary matter. We discussed staffing over the past week. We had some days where we were -- had some really high turnout -- sorry, high calling out, but we were able to cover that. For the most part, we had 62 uncovered classes, but those were covered by putting kids in cafeterias and other large rooms with supervision in those rooms and appropriate space in between students in those situations. We will continue to monitor that as we go -- get closer to winter break and also as we come out the other side. We are also -- Mr. Calhan shared that Dr. Radwan may be recommending the hiring of two RNs that we're working on, who are currently in the CSN program so that we can have -- fill in some of our vacancies that are currently being covered by contract nurses. Finally, we wrapped up our discussion with something we've discussed every year now for the last couple of years, about the increase in New Jersey minimum wage and how that may affect our staff. This year -- sorry, starting in 2021, the minimum wage moves from $11 an hour to $12 an hour. The only positions affected at this time by that increase is substitute secretary and substitute lunch aide. Both of those will have their rates raised to $12 an hour. And that was all we covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. So the next item on the agenda is comments from the public and board on either input on the 2021-22 budget or the action agenda or any item. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do via Zoom, in person if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent via letter or email to boepubliccomments@https.us. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. If time remains in this public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per by law 0167. Before you state your question or comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employee Acts encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session. So with that, the way we'll do this first is we'll take comments from the public here at Otten Road School before we turn to Zoom calls. There are no board emails. So we will have 30 minutes for this public comment. I note at 7:51 PM. Again, there'll be a three-minute limit for all comments. Ms. Smith? I'm going to elevate you to panelists. And I will ask you, Mrs. Smith, to turn on your video and unmute yourself. Okay, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Christina Smith, second VP, ATA. Tonight, I'm going to be reading an anonymous letter that was sent to me to read at tonight's board meeting. Letters as follows: "Dr. Antounis, I am proud to say that I work with a dedicated team of teaching professionals across this district. We work hard to meet the needs of all the students throughout our schools. I would consider myself a compliant staff member who doesn't like conflicts, but one statement in a recent email to the school community really bothered me. I'm sure you've heard that for every one negative comment, a person needs to hear 10 positive comments in order to undo"
I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith. Sorry. We do not accept anonymous comments. So this person can email the board, and obviously, we will be happy to read it. They can send a letter to the board, obviously, but we cannot have anonymous comments read to the public. Thank you. Is there another? Mrs. Salinger, hold on a second. There you are.
Good.
Go ahead, Mrs. Salinger.
Okay, thanks. Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School and ATA treasurer. Good evening. I am speaking tonight in regards to the second reading of policies for teaching and support staff use of social networking sites. The first reading was approved by the board at the November 23rd meeting. I've stood before this board several times this year and spoken about collaboration. I'm here once again to reiterate that the ATA maintains our willingness and readiness to collaborate with the board. I bring this up because at the November 23rd meeting, Mr. Goodhue shared concerns about this policy as well as questioned its necessity, given an already existing policy. He also expressed a willingness to work together to discuss the policy and the concerns. The administration did as well. To my knowledge, no formal discussion occurred. In reviewing the policy in its current state, the same concerns expressed at the November meeting still remain. It contains ambiguous and subjective language. Based on this, there's potential for grievances which could result in potential costs for the BOE. To be clear, the ATA is not against the policy regarding staff use of social networking sites. We are against implementing such a policy without any collaboration with those it will affect, especially when we have repeatedly and publicly asked for collaboration, and many of you at this dais have seemed to indicate you agree that collaboration is the right path to take. With all due respect, I urge you to table the vote on the second reading tonight and allow us to discuss the policy with the proper committee. The result could be a policy that was come to with mutual understanding and respect rather than another example of failed collaboration. Thank you.
Mr. Goodhue, I will promote you to panelist. Hold on.
Thank you. Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I won't reiterate the comments that Miss Salinger just said, but I would like to add to them. We did publicly commit to working on this policy, to finding one to make it one that is representative of all parties' needs, and I recognize that some steps were taken. But as Miss Salinger said, concerns still exist related to some of the language in there. And I fully believe that we are capable of finding a way to make a policy that is indicative of what needs to be in place for the district's needs but also reflective of the stakeholders who will be governed by it. There was no formal conversation that took place on it. I was told that a conversation would take place. I was told that we would be able to provide some written feedback on that policy. And then I found out on Sunday that it was posted on the agenda for the second reading. So I recognize, again, as Amy said, that we do need a policy or that most institutions have a policy, but this is in no way indicative of collaboration. It is the most low-level collaboration that we could ever engage in, which is just providing one more meeting for us to give feedback on this policy, true feedback, not just anecdotal passby's on it. So I do urge you to table this tonight. Take it up at the next meeting. We will commit ourselves to actually working through this and making it reflective of what's needed. The reality is, is that with this being the entry into any sort of collaboration, if we entry into any sort of collaboration, if we don't do that, it's indicative of where collaboration may fail elsewhere. We have staffing needs that we have to address. We have to look at collaboration to find ways to meet those needs. We have to look at the increase in cases in town. We saw fifty one cases over the weekend. The governor spoke to increasing cases among young adults who are in the age range to be older siblings coming home from college, to be near our students during the holidays. And we have to figure out how to appropriately respond to that and plan for the safety of students and staff in our buildings. And this is absolutely the lowest level of collaboration that we could possibly have is this policy and just tabling it for one more meeting to actually allow that conversation to take place. So I beseech the board to do that, to show a real a real commitment to actually collaborating on this. And I don't think that there's actually any harm in holding off for one more meeting to do so. Thank you.
I don't seeing no other public comment in the room. I will. I see Ms. Dana Gordon. I'm promoting you to panelist. Go ahead, Mrs. Gordon.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Dana Gordon, Ford Dumont Round. First, I want to congratulate all the teachers and staff recognized today. Secondly, I would like to thank Dr. Swanson, Dr. Harris, and Mrs. Haas for your time volunteering for the Board of Education. Last week, our numbers again increased. They have increased every week. We have had we had a hundred and eighteen cases and lost two residents last week. The daily case average is forty two point fourteen per hundred thousand. We have had fifty one new cases today and lost yet another resident. I would like to ask again that we include all students, hybrid and virtual, in our school counts. The public sees these numbers as that the district sends them directly and looks at them as a false sense of security as lower than they really are. I'm requesting that if you plan to continue to exclude students who are virtual, that you should put that on each of your emails that you are not including them in your numbers. This would make it a little more clear. I would also like to ask the board that we's. Hello?
I'm sorry. I didn't. I'm sorry about that.
I'd also like to ask that the the board that we cease the discussion about kids not dying from COVID. Not only is this a callous discussion, but the information being provided by board members is not accurate. It was stated last week at the meeting that forty nine children have died in the United States and none in New Jersey. Here's the accurate numbers according to the American Academy of Pediatrics dated twelve three. A hundred and fifty four children have succumbed to COVID nineteen. Seventeen percent of the cases in New Jersey are children. Two percent or one out of every fifty children, child age case in New Jersey has had to be hospitalized. This is the second largest rate of hospitalization according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. And sadly, New Jersey has lost three children to this horrible virus. There when there are discussions about kids in the schools being safe, it seems there's never any thought about the adults. Even one board member made a statement that young kids need to be in school under the age of ten, but he was not sure about high school and stated, high school students? I don't know about that. They're like adults. So whatever we do for adults, we probably would have to do for high school. If a high schooler isn't safe because they're like adults, what are teachers? Do you forget our staff is the age of all the statistics? Last week, we lost two residents to the virus. Based on the reporting on the Hillsborough three one one site, one resident was in their nineties, the other was in their fifties. We now have two families entering or currently observing holidays without their loved ones. You have staff members, residents, students also entering the holidays without their loved ones due to the virus. In this community, all community matters. In our schools, staff and students matter. Discounting people based on their age is not acceptable. We need to remember that school is made up of all ages and all people should be considered. Thank you.
Ms. Kay, I'm going to promote you to panelist and ask that you turn on your video and unmute. Mute.
Hey, hi. I would like to address the district's decision to return to hybrid learning after Thanksgiving break. I can imagine that decision wasn't really easy, whether to go virtuals or stay virtual or go hybrid again. And it is impossible to make everyone happy. I get that. But considering this, I would think that the best way to arrive at such an important decision would have been to involve the various stakeholders in the community. I understand that the principals in a meeting with Dr. Antunes expressed the opinion that we should remain virtual. The staff was not asked to weigh in, nor do I believe the community was. And I understand that even some of the board members only knew about the decision to return to hybrid learning at the same time the staff did. So I'm so curious about exactly how many people were involved in a decision that would that would affect so many of us. It seems as if there were only a few people that decided for everyone else. Since Dr. Antunes's letter came out Friday before last, many students have switched from hybrid to virtual learning. We receive emails from the guidance department every single day about kids who are switching from hybrid to virtual. And last week, Dr. Sasan said that forty percent of our students are hybrid. However, many of the students who chose to be hybrid are not coming into the buildings. Over the last two weeks, the number of students on our rosters is much higher than the number that actually attend class. Today, in a period that should have had nine kids in my class, I saw two. In another period, I saw three out of ten. Like, so the numbers are not accurate with how many people are actually in my building. So while all stakeholders were not involved or considered in the decision to return to hybrid learning, I think these numbers certainly speak to the number of parents who do not believe it is safe to be in the buildings at this time. We have two and a half months or two and a half marking periods, rather, left in the school year, and the spring may see better circumstances, but it's doubtful that the winter will. If we do not change to a virtual learning model before the end of the second marking period, I would like to encourage you to use the time that we have remaining before the third marking period starts to attempt to create a virtual cohort of teachers or some other solution to allow for virtual teaching. I'm sure you could find staff members who would be happy to help with this task. It would reduce the number of leaves and it would accommodate the staff members who really have medical needs, childcare needs, and possibly those who are just uncomfortable putting themselves at risk. It is not okay that our members are being forced to take leaves at a reduced pay because the district won't even try to accommodate them. And I understand that Dr. Swanson said last week about how other districts have had trouble with the model of an all virtual cohort, but we haven't even tried to create one. Does our dedication to the district and our students not warrant at least an attempt at it? Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Novatsky, I'm going to promote you to panelist and ask that you turn on your video and unmute.
Hi, Deb Novatsky, sixth grade teacher, Otten Road Intermediate. This is my last board meeting as a staff member. My chronic illness has been recognized by both the state and the district. I want to thank the board for allowing me to teach remotely until my disability was approved by the state. To my knowledge, I am the only teacher who was approved to do so. There's been a great deal of contention between the staff, the board, and the community. People have spoken about the need to listen and empathize. It is what we teach our students day in and day out. However, as adults, we've all been doing a lousy job of modeling that. My chronic illness affords me a drastically different perspective than most. Everyone keeps throwing around the word science like it's set in stone and never changing. However, this is not true when it comes to matching science to medicine. Currently, medicine is in triage mode and medical studies and reports are ever evolving. Viruses mutate. Viruses cause long term damage or issues that do not arise until many years down the line. A July study at the Indiana School of Medicine highlighted one hundred long hauler symptoms of the virus. Of that list of a hundred, I have forty three of them on a regular basis. My mother is dismayed to know that my having had Epstein Barr mono at sixteen caused a plethora of autoimmune issues that I also suffer from today. We are so concerned about right now. We think students are falling behind. They aren't socializing. They are missing out on a great many things. And much of that is true. However, what about their futures? What if having the virus in any form asymptomatic or not causes many more than the one hundred long term effects being seen now? What if these effects don't appear until they are adults? What if medicine at that point doesn't tie complications in the future to this virus and the complications aren't taken seriously? I know what that is like firsthand. It took over twelve years for my diagnosis to come to light and get me treatment. Twelve years. Yes, there are drawbacks to teaching remotely. With any change in teaching practice, there are always drawbacks. We win over some new students and we struggle with losing others. I made connections in ways not experienced before in my eighteen years. Yes, that took a lot of work, but every second of that was worth it. And you know how I know? Friday, when I announced that I was retiring, there were few dry eyes and many, if not all, dumb, trawden faces. And I was able to get all of my students to turn on their cameras for the discussion. It is my strong opinion that not allowing teachers who need to to teach remotely is a mistake. At Otten Road, over a hundred and fifty sixth graders have not had a consistent science teacher since September. There has been no one to fill in regularly. It is also my strong opinion that not considering the future implications of this virus will hurt our children in the long run. I wouldn't want anyone else to live with forty three or more of these one hundred long term effects regularly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Novatsky, and thank you for the service, your many years of service for our children.
Thank you.
Mrs. Valano, I'm going to promote you to panelist and ask that you turn on your video and your and unmute yourself. Go ahead, Mrs. Valano.
Thank you. Good evening. Kelly Valano, eighty seven Meadowbrook Drive, Otten Road teacher. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Swanson, Dr. Harris, and Mrs. Haas for your many, many years of service, many hours away from your family. And just to recognize that that you have done that for the community. So thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments slash questions. Recently, I was asked by a community members, you know, how are the decisions made? How are what are the metrics that are used to determine if school is in session or not? And quite honestly, I'm not even sure. So I'm just bringing that question to you. I know that there the Cali report come down on Thursday. I think it would be helpful if somebody could please explain how that is used in terms of decisions if we should be in school as far as the number of people who are positive in our community with the virus. I also would like to just share with you, I'm pretty certain that people have seen this on social media, but just yesterday, there was a post that said, just repeating, to the lady that it was at Nails and Beyond this morning, talking to her friend about how she wasn't feeling well, as well as mentioning you were going to get tested for COVID. If you're not feeling well, please stay home. So I'm bringing that to your attention because I remember Dr. Mendelbaum in the summer saying that, you know, we need to figure out a way to incentivize parents to keep children home. But I think we also need to find a way to incentivize parents to be forthcoming if there is a positive COVID within their house. Just this weekend, I was working with a student privately, working with the student, and the parent shared with me that the student, two of the student's friends tested positive for COVID, and they were not reporting it to the school, but instead saying that they were quarantining. I think this is a real issue within our community. Having my own children and talking to them about this, having high schoolers, this is definitely something that's happening, and parents are calling it the COVID shame. So unfortunately, I'm not really sure that we can be certain that COVID is not transmitting within our building. And especially if you look at who is now getting sick in our buildings, there have been quite a few staff members according to people talking because we don't really say if it's staff or students. But I want to share with you one thing that I was asked to think about many years ago when I started teaching graduate school.
Mrs. Valano, please finish up. It's your three minutes are up. So please take some time to finish up. Thank you.
Sure. One more thing. Thank you. I had the decision to make, you know, do I teach a class when incumbent weather was coming? And my boss said to me, here's what you need to do. You need to think about this in terms of five minutes, five weeks, and five months. In five minutes from now, is it going to matter? Absolutely. People are not going to be happy that you need to make that decision that affects them. In five weeks from now, how might they feel? And in five months from now. So I ask you to do the same. In five minutes from now, people may be upset that our district maybe makes the decision to go virtual before the holidays, and I would hope through the middle of January. In five weeks from now, maybe they'll still be upset. But in five months from now, if this prevents somebody from getting sick and dying or having those long term effects, then I think we've made a good decision. Thank you.
Melissa Smith, I'm promoting you to panelist and asking that you turn on your video and unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Smith, and I live on Van Zandt Drive. I'm a longtime resident of Hillsborough and teacher at Otten Road School. I'd like to also start off by thanking Dr. Harris, Dr. Swanson, and Mrs. Haas for your years of service to the Hillsborough School community. It's very much appreciated. I have a couple of questions that I'm hoping that you might be able to answer for me. We have been told in emails that there has been no school based transmission of COVID nineteen at this time. We have heard of instances, though, of cases with some questionable origins among staff members that could be indicative of possible school transmission. So I'm just wondering if you can please help me understand how it has been determined that no cases of COVID nineteen have been transmitted in our schools. My next question is in regards to the decision to switch to virtual instruction back in November. I understand that there were several factors that were considered when making this decision, one of which was the increase in cases for our region of the state. As Mrs. Gordon already stated, our cases continue to rise. In fact, we saw another fifty one cases in our town over this past weekend. Considering that our numbers are still on the rise, it's evident that even with the precautions being taken by so many people, it's still not enough. I am concerned that the numbers will only continue to climb after our winter break, particularly after New Year's Eve. I know that these decisions are not taken lightly, nor are they by any means easy to make. But is there some specific criteria or thresholds that you use that you can share with the public so that in the event that another pivot to virtual learning should become necessary, it might be easier for the community to anticipate such? It's very disheartening to see community members constantly debating this topic on social media. In a time when we all need to be working together, I feel as if our community is being pulled further apart. The constant speculation about what may happen next only seems to make it worse. Perhaps some clarity on how these decisions are made would help people know what to expect and hopefully help to start bringing people back together within the community. Finally, thank you for all for your time and for your service to the children of Hillsborough.
Thank you. Okay, I see no further attendees, and I Okay, I see no further attendees, and I think we've reached the end of public comment. So I'll open it up for board comment. Any comments from the board? Mrs. Stats?
Well, following up on Dr. Antunes's comments about our three departing board members, I just wanted to thank each of them for their service. Dr. Harris, you brought your own unique perspective as a former teacher and your experience in science in the district. Not to mention everything you've gained as earning your doctorate and your interest and expertise in sustainability. And I think that all of that has helped our district and our students in particular. So I thank you for that. Dr. Swisson, thank you for, geez, what a difficult year for all of us and under your leadership during this very difficult year. I appreciate your own expertise in your field, and that has only helped us. And thank you for always respectfully putting up with my many questions and comments. So thank you. And Dr. Ha, I'm sorry, Mrs. Haas? Thank you for your many, many years of service. There were many years you were like the lone voice, being so passionate on behalf of the staff and especially the students, always fighting for them for what's best for our students. And I think through that, there have been many things that have been to their benefit. So I appreciate all your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Anyone else? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that if there are students testing positive, and perhaps Dr. Antunes, because you've been on the phone with Miss Spano much more than I have. But my understanding that if a student tests positive, the testing center alerts the township immediately. The township alerts the school. So even if students who are testing positive or their families are not directly alerting the school, the school is notified by the township. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So I did want to alleviate any fear that that system has been working, to my knowledge, so that if there are people saying that they're not going to alert the school, the school is, has been notified and have passed cases pretty quickly. And then the school asks the student not to come to school and quarantine. Or actually, at that point, if they've tested positive, that's isolation. That's not quarantining. That is spending 10 days isolated or until a positive test comes back. Negative test, sorry. Positive meaning it's positive for them, not positive for the virus. Sorry, it's been a long, it's been a long year, actually. Okay, so with no other comments, I think we'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Antunes?
Thank you, Dr. Swisson. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 9.1 to 9.3. A motion to approve submission of the carryover amendments for ESEA. Motion to approve submission of amendments 1920 carryover for IDEA. And motion to submit the Somerset County Cares Act application in the amount of $25,000, $25,617.91.
Do I have a motion to approve education agenda items 9.1 to 9.3? Mrs. Haas, Dr. Harris, would you like the second part?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mahmood, can I have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mr. Gregory Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahio?
Yes.
And Dr. Swisson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows, 10.1 to 10.11. Motion to approve retirements and resignations. And I'd like to point out and congratulate Mrs. Norowski on her retirement, as well as Mrs. Hazel on her retirement. Motion to approve revised resignation dates, revised leaves of absences, and transfer or change in assignment. Motion to approve leaves of absence, appointments as listed, student teacher, turnkey trainers. Motion to approve extra coverage, the unaffiliated administrator salaries for 2021, and motion to approve policies for second reading.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Do I have a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.11 of the HR Agenda? As read by Dr. Antunes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. Can I have a roll call, please? Yes, Mrs. Trahio?
Please separate out 10.11.
Okay. Any other discussion on 10.1 through 10.10? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gregory Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
All right, what's going on with this Gregory Gillette stuff?
You missed it for the first half of the meeting, so.
I guess I did. Okay, well, I vote yes.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahio?
Yes.
And Dr. Swisson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve item 10.11, the policies for second reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Harris.
So as I had said at the November 23 meeting, I object to this policy because of many reasons. The main concern being my concern for selective implementation of the various items in this policy. While we discussed it in HR Committee and made it slightly better, I still am very concerned about that selective implementation, specifically that the district would be required to act on things that basically there is no, there is no monitoring mechanism. So if the district was informed that such a policy was violated, the district would be required to investigate. But I am concerned about selective notification of breaking the policy. And so I encourage my fellow board members to also vote no on this policy and perhaps send it back to committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Mrs. Stats and then Mr. Pulsifer?
Thank you, Dr. Swisson. I had several thoughts, so I put it to paper first. So I will be reading these thoughts. Regarding the social media policy, first of all, I appreciate the change about when staff can't post during school hours. But again, who's going to monitor that? And it's targeting staff members who are in the classroom in particular. I'm still dismayed by the language regarding threat of dismissal at the beginning of this policy. The following policies regarding teaching staff members and support staff members have no such language in any part of those policies. Electronic communications between teaching staff members and students, inappropriate staff conduct and standard of conduct. Consequences for inappropriate behavior spelled out in the policy on discipline, which does include the possibility of dismissal. Therefore, including the threat of dismissal in the social media policies is legally unnecessary and has extreme and intimidating nature could stifle even helpful communication for fear of a subjective judgment leading to dismissal. I'm disappointed and saddened that time, money, and effort has been spent on this policy at this time. There's no sense of urgency about this policy, as opposed to other matters, especially matters related to the pandemic. Let's not do this now, not during this pandemic, not during this holiday season, not at the last meeting for three wonderful board members. I know each of these board members to be very empathetic, and this policy does not reflect that, nor does it represent all the good that they have done for Hillsborough students and staff. On that note, let's at least wait until the new board members are sworn in next month. This policy of past will start to be implemented at the beginning of their terms, but they will not have had a say in it. That hardly seems fair. As I stated a few weeks ago, the relationship between the board and teaching staff is fragile. This could understandably worsen that relationship. And I am still concerned, bless you. And I'm still concerned about the subjective nature of determining whether any comments on social media are inappropriate. I don't want to stifle commentary from the staff. In fact, I would like to welcome even more commentary. I would like to find out more about what the staff and students are experiencing, the new, the bad, and the good. I know that legally, we can have this policy. Likewise, legally, we don't have to. Anyway, what's legal isn't necessarily what's best. Legally, we can have over 30 students in every elementary school classroom, but we don't because that is not what is best for our students and staff. We should be focusing on making decisions related to what's necessary now, along with all of the usual, necessary, but more mundane actions and decisions. We should be focused on making a horrible time maybe a little less horrible. Let's not add even more stress for the staff on top of the additional stress they are experiencing due to the unprecedented demands of meeting the needs of our students, both in person and virtually during these times. Let's not add more stress on top of worries about their own health, the health of their loved ones, and the health of their students. We should not be spending time and money and attention on something that adds stress. We should be spending time and money and attention on reducing stress and addressing the social and emotional needs and the mental health of staff and students. The policies imply that making negative statements on social media damages the reputation of our school district. Actually, whatever the complaints are about damages the reputation of the district. If we want the district to have a wonderful reputation, we'll have to address the source of the complaints and have open, two-way communication, collaboration that leads to positive results. Thank you.
Mr. Pulsifer?
It's come up several times, the discussion around selective enforcement or variations on that theme. And I understand the concern with that. But in any system with rules or laws, that is always the case. And that is never the reason not to have those laws. I will not stipulate any date and time, but on numerous occasions on Interstate 78, I have gone over 65 miles an hour. There was nobody there. Nobody arrested me, nobody reported me. That doesn't make that a bad law, and that doesn't mean we should strike that law just because we can't always catch me going too fast. If we were to decide to not have any policy that we cannot 100% enforce correctly, never missing any cases, and never overapplying them, we probably wouldn't have any policies. We have to accept that policies aren't perfect, but they give us rules and guidelines to try to make sure that we, as a district, staff, students, administration, and some of the community, attempt to do our best. Ruling out policies because we can't handle it perfectly is not the way we will make progress on this.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Anybody else? May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas? Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
No.
Ms. Trahio?
No.
And Dr. Swisson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agendas, 11.1 to 11.6, as Mr. Gillette pointed out earlier. So the motion to approve the monthly financials and monthly bills, motion to approve the 2021 line item transfers, motion to accept the donation, motion to approve bylaw for second reading, and motion to appoint special counsel for legal matters pertaining to the ESIP project, again, as described by Mr. Gillette earlier.
Thank you. Any discussion on those items? This is Mrs. Trahio and then Mr. Pulsifer.
So I read the operations minutes. I don't know what we're approving, and I would like a little bit more information.
Yeah, I don't even have the resolution to be read out loud. For board members, Mr. Lapira, do you have that?
Sure. We dictated it earlier. But the resolution is that you would be appointing Tesser and Cohen as special counsel for legal matters pertaining to the ESIP matters. And those individuals, I have spoken with the individuals who work there, and they're very qualified to handle those types of construction disputes. Their rates actually are, they were willing to do public entity rates, which are the same as ours, which is great. And they, I unfortunately didn't get a retainer agreement until about 5 o'clock tonight. But I did send that to Iman and to Ashley, once I got here, actually, because I was on the road when it came in. But yeah, we do have that. It's a standard retainer agreement, and it's solely to handle matters pertaining to the ESIP issue.
Okay.
Are there other questions?
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes, do we have, have we taken into account putting any kind of limits on how much money we would spend without getting further board approval or any kind of guidance along that line? And having that incorporated as part of the agreement and further board to approve it that way?
Yes, Mr. Pulsifer, I may, Dr. Swisson. We did discuss that at Ops, and that was one of the questions that Mr. Gillette brought up, that we would, as we talk to council, there would be limitations that we put in there. Because one of the things that Mr. Gillette brought up was that this had to be worth effort on the board's part financially. So we believe so, based on the information we have. But that is something that I will work with council to make sure that there is limitations. And ultimately, the board needs to be able to see sort of a, it's a little bit of a risk on the board's part, but we believe that the litigation will, I don't even want to go into details other than the fact that we believe the board would benefit from the retainer and that we would have limits on that attorney's as far as where they can go and how much they can charge the board.
And if I could add on to that, I think that it makes sense when you have the, probably within the next couple of weeks, I would say, because I know that towards the end of the year, things may be a little bit hectic. But towards the next couple of weeks, I think it makes sense to have that initial conversation with Mr. Tesser and any of his associates that might be involved with that to kind of lay out the parameters. And certainly in my conversations with him, he fully understands that while there may be some amount of work that needs to get done to get up to speed and to be able to analyze potential causes of action, things of that nature, he will bring you to that point when then you have to make a decision about whether to go forward or not to go forward. But I think that with that initial conversation, you'll probably get a sense as to how much time he might need to spend. So I certainly can relate to him. We're not going to go gangbusters right away. We're going to have a conversation with the committee and establish some parameters before anything else goes forward.
Yeah, and I think one last thing I want to add, Mr. Rahio, is that just to answer one of your questions, I believe that Dr. Antunes and I had talked about possibly addressing this as a closed session matter at some point as we continue to move forward. Because I think the board needs to be brief as the details. But we're not, we didn't want to do that tonight, other than the retainer. But there would be a briefing to the board once we talk to council about sort of what, where, and all the specifics so the whole board's engaged.
Mr. Pulsifer?
It may not be appropriate for time because it's sort of in the process, but I really believe that the board should vote on that cap as a board and set that cap before we make much progress at all in terms of, I'm going back to some of the lawsuits we had back in the 2002, 2004, 2006 type in with some construction litigation. And the board set limits, not that we wouldn't go above that, but we've set limits beforehand so that as we approach those limits, the board would have to agree to continue to pursue. Because as is always the case with these, there's a point where we consider whether we want to spend more on the legal counsel than we would have spent to settle it in the first place. And I think the board needs to be involved in that process and formally set those limits where approval would be required to go. A new approval for the board would be required to go above those limits.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Gillette? Did I, I saw your finger, but I didn't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I can add to it, that we did talk about some numbers. I don't know if that's appropriate to say in public, though, because we shouldn't talk. I don't know if that's appropriate to say in public though, because we shouldn't talk, Vic, let's put this way. Mr. Lapira, not Vic, Mr. Lapira, Vittorio, since we're going by proper first names tonight, Vittorio.
Thank you.
It did give us a sense of what an initial review from the special counsel attorney would entail in hours, and that mystery would then just do just what he said. We say, provide us with, okay, here's what you've got, here's the course of actions I can take, here's the potential amount we could recover or the segment we could come to. Now, go put a cap on that or do, depending on what you choose. This investment is going to be, I can't even say it right now, Chris, maybe I could, we could talk about it after the meeting. I shouldn't say it in public because we don't want to tell him, I've numbered down, and he says, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write hours up to that amount. Not that attorneys ever do that. But you know what I'm saying? But so we will come to a point where we definitely should absolutely agree the hundred percent, put a cap on where we're going with this.
If I could just, you know, I, yeah, I agree, and I agree with not making this a public number because that obviously gives away any kind of negotiating position. But I think even in an executive session or otherwise, that there should be a limit before the fact as much as possible and not later. And in the situation we've been in this case, in this kind of position in the past where I was on the board, that's not to say we didn't later approve to go higher, but the board wanted to make sure that right from the get-go, there was a limit that would require approval to keep going. And that, you know, if we get that number three months from now, we may have already gone past a point where some board members are comfortable. And I think, that's why I think it needs to be something that is discussed early and that the board does have a collective agreement on what that limit would be before we go too far to make sure that we don't overstep what may be the opinion of a majority of the board as to how far to go. So I think it needs to happen sooner rather than later, but obviously tonight is a little too quick to get there.
Great. Anything else, Mrs. Trheo?
So I'm like, what are we exactly voting on, just the retainer? We're just hiring this firm as a retainer?
Just on appointing them special counsel, that's all. That's all. The only thing that the board is, is voting on is a special counsel.
So we're not voting on them actually doing anything until another executive session in which we determine parameters and caps?
They need to evaluate whether or not we actually have a case. So they will have to approve some billing to review all of the case, you know, all of the details of the case and make a recommendation about whether or not we actually have a case. And at that time, we would say whether or not it is worth any additional work based on what they think the outcomes might be.
So it sounds like, Mr. Lapira, from your review, that we do have enough of a case to warrant special counsel?
Yes, I think that it makes sense to have special counsel appointed to take a look at the potential causes of action that we've identified. And I don't think it's going to be, I mean, again, I don't want to put any hard numbers on it because I'm not just quite sure how much it will take, knowing there's, you know, construction cases often have voluminous amounts of documents, but I'm thinking that somewhere in the forty to eighty-hour range probably gets the firm to the point where they can say, okay, maybe it's less than that, I could be overestimating, but I'm trying to go a little bit on the high side. And they might say, all right, based upon all that information, you know, we have a good sense as to what these are, and here's what the budget would be going forward if and when we decide to pursue certain action. So that's what I think we're looking at in terms of scope.
Thank you. So my other question is, with, I am surprised, like, I did not expect it, I didn't see it on the agenda. I saw it on the operations minutes. Am I the only one that's surprised to see a walk-on for something that's, unless I'm misunderstanding, is this not a significant appointment? Like, I'm just, I'm surprised that it wasn't on the agenda for me to ask questions in advance because now I don't even know what questions I have.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think in terms of the timing, so when we had the committee meeting last week, and then, and then I finally was able to touch base, the attorney after that, and then I didn't get the retainer until today. But, yeah, I mean, in terms of the appointment, what I would say is the appointment could happen now. You could certainly say with the appointment, look, please don't do any work until we have a time to enlist, until he can meet or his staff can meet with the committee and discuss, you know, what the parameters are going to be for the initial review. So.
So I guess my question is, what is the rush for the walk-on tonight? Is there a deadline that we're trying to meet?
No, there's no, there's no specific deadline, no. I mean, you want to do it sooner rather than later so they can start getting up to speed, but no, there's not a specific deadline for tonight versus January. But, but I think it might be, from my perspective, might be helpful to at least have that appointment, have the conversation, set the parameters, look, don't start working on this yet. You know, hold off until we are, we know what we want to do in terms of, you know, dollar amounts, expenditures, so forth and so on. And then they can get direction from the committee and then from the board as to, as to what work they need to do.
Mr. Gillette?
So, Mrs. Trheo, there's no specific deadline of tonight, but I think Mrs. Stats and Dr. Harris would agree with me that our architect, Mr. Wozni, was very concerned about the building maintenance system and wants, he's the only one, he needs a resolution of that as quickly as possible to be able to get the next phase of the whole HVAC systems and everything completed. And, you know, he is, you know, he wants us to scrap, look, he made suggestions, I didn't report it because I don't know if I had it in my notes, but he made suggestions of scrapping the whole Honeywell system that we spent a lot of money for, just forget about it, and going with some other system, which is going to cost money. It's going to cost tens of the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever it would cost, another expenditure, scrap this. But we kind of said, I think we kind of, well, let's, you know, this is, we've already spent money here. We need to find out what we can do with what we've already spent. I don't want to get too much into the case. I'm starting to feel like I'm talking of stuff that I shouldn't speak about now, but I just want to give you a sense of it that while there's no specific deadline, there was some urgency in finding out where we are with this now, like, right now. Are we ever going to have that building maintenance system from Honeywell operational or not? And that's what we're looking for.
Again, I don't know.
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Stats.
I don't want to give away anything that I don't allow to, there was an issue of access, right? With Honeywell, they weren't giving us access to the information that we needed. So that's, that is another reason for some urgency because of the information we can't get because Honeywell is basically, you know, tying our hands with that.
Yeah.
So, so I understand that part. I guess my objection is that it wasn't even listed as a placeholder so that this walk-on resolution, as we were all often told or often asked, no surprises, I feel like I just got, like, here, please, please.
There's been plenty of times that you've surprised us too. So, I mean, you're welcome to vote no, but I think, you know, that there's been plenty of explanation, and so without further ado, I think we should just call the vote. People can table it, people can vote no, but, you know, that there isn't anything here beyond what, you know, that, yes, could it have been on the agenda? It would have been preferable to do so, but I think there's been sufficient explanation about the timing from both Mr. Lapira and Mr. Gillette to warrant us actually taking this vote.
So would you like to separate that?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, like, how serious it is. Like, if it's, if it's just a routine thing that was just not on the agenda, that's fine.
That's been asked and answered. Yeah, thanks. Okay, with that, Mr. Mahmud, may I have a roll call, please?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mrs. Trheo?
Yes.
And Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, then, we have comments from the public and the board again. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two thirty-minute periods of that time of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, or members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do via Zoom, in person, if they are attending in person or via written comments. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the district as per bylaw oh one six seven. Before you state your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, are there any, any members of the public present? Mr. Goodhue? I'm promoting you to panelist.
Thank you. Henry Goodhue Hillsborough Education Association. I had just two comments. One, we heard multiple times tonight from the community there was concern about when there's declarative statements about there is no spread within the schools. In fairness, I think unless the district says there is no known spread within the schools, they are putting their name on that assurance. And when and if that becomes an issue, I think, you know, while there's debates about liability, at least in terms of credibility, the district has put its name on the fact that there is not. And that is a large if in many situations when it comes to student and staff safety. My other comment is in relation to the policy that passed. I understand that the policy passed. I understand that the WDEA is specifically noted in that, and I feel that that's probably going to become pretty important with the enforcement of this policy. And as Ms. Salinger said, in passing this policy without any input from stakeholders, the district has put themselves in a situation where arbitrary enforcement of this is going to lead to unfair labor practices, grievances, and numerous other instances that are going to be problematic. I think it's interesting, though, that the correlation or the comparison was drawn to speeding and to the history of speeding. Because if you look at the history of speeding, in the early nineteen hundreds, there was actually debate between whether or not signs should exist. And there were arbitrary signs from one community to the next where some felt that there were signs that should say, go, you're going too slow. They encouraged people to go faster. Some said it was, they set a limit. And what they actually had to do with speeding was collectively come to an understanding of what that speed should be. And it wasn't actually until, I believe, President Nixon, when there was an oil shortage, that there was universal agreement as to what that should be, and all the stakeholders collectively agreed universally about fifty-five. So I think that it's interesting that we're using that because speeding actually by definition has a history of being arbitrary and being inconsistent in its enforcement, which is exactly what this policy is itself doing. And to be clear, given the opportunity tonight to table a very low-level policy for one meeting and work with the stakeholders, the majority of the board chose not to do that and push forward with it. There was no risk in holding this off for one more meeting, but the majority of the board, when posed with either collaboration or pushing forward with a policy, chose to push forward with a policy. That is incredibly disappointing and is indicative of the larger problems that we face. Thank you.
Anybody else here? Mrs. Bates, I'm promoting you to panelist.
Hi, Jean Bates, HTA secretary. Tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of some of my colleagues. On December fourth, an email was sent from Dr. Antunes that included a statement that showed a lack of appreciation for staff members in Hillsborough, and I quote, "I am well aware that this decision will not be a welcome one for all. However, at this time, I also believe that the benefits of returning to school outweigh the risks." It is ironic that the people who are making the decisions about the risks that we take are not sitting in a classroom with students, but making decisions from the safety of their own offices. That statement made staff feel unappreciated and disposable. They are worried about their health and the health of their family, their colleagues, and their students. They're worried about how COVID is going to affect people in the future. So I ask, when you send an email to staff that you consider your audience, please be sensitive to the unknown circumstances. I also ask that these risks are not minimized because staff members feel them every time they enter a building. Thank you.
Anybody else present here? Seeing none. Ms. Triano, I'm going to promote you to panelist and ask that you turn on your video and unmute yourself.
Anybody hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Triano.
Good evening. My concern is actually about transportation for my student. My name is Amy Triano. I live in forty-three Murray Drive. And where our house is situated, we are, we have four hundred feet elevation. And for the past years, my son started school for three, when he was three years old, and our house is always the bus stop because of the, of our location. But since like the, there were more students that came in our neighborhood, the bus stop has changed. But last year, I made a plea to the transportation with, including the three medical letters from my mother-in-law, who's the one picking up my kids on the bus stop, that if they could move the bus stop in my house, in front of my house again, given my mother-in-law's situation with her medical thing, but that was rejected. So we made it through, but then I observed last Thursday, last week, that my daughter and my daughter are the last one, who was the last drop-off of the, of the bus. And for a certain reason, we live beside each other, and they have two different bus stops. My daughter is a drop-off on corner of Murray Drive and Starview, and my next-door neighbor is drop-off to Ski and Murray Drive. Mind you, the Ski and Murray Drive is a steep hill. So the student is actually, my neighbor's daughter is actually climbing up the hill to go back to their house. So my question is, when I called transportation so many times, they're always asking, there was always telling me that it's, the child's safety is the main consideration for the bus stop to change. So now what I'm asking is like, don't you think it's really dangerous for the kids to climb up the hill, especially when the weather change with four hundred feet elevation with them, with their fifteen or twenty pounds bag at their back? And I'm actually, I sent an email to the transportation trying to propose a new bus stop between forty-three and Murray to combine my daughter's and my next-door neighbor's bus stop, and they would eliminate another stop. I know how like the bus route runs because I also drive a bus on the summer. Every minute counts. But eliminating a bus stop, I should save one bus stop and combine the two kids since they're the only one left on the bus. And I spoke to the driver, and they said like, there's no problem if they could combine this, the thing. So I'm trying to plead with the transportation if it's possible for them to move the bus stop to my proposal location.
Mr. Mahmud, is this something that you could assist with offline since this should have gone through? I mean, it sounds like she addressed transportation, so you would be the next person in line in the chain of command, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be, Dr. Swasan. I'll certainly, Ms. Triano, I'll reach out to you tomorrow. I have to talk to transportation first. Unfortunately, I can't make a decision until I have all my facts. Transportation does, they do things for a reason, and they make decisions for a reason. But we would absolutely look at your matter and consider it, you know, and I will get involved as far as, I can't make any promises nor will I, but I could say to you that we'll look at it, and if it's something that we can alter, we'll certainly do so, depending on the facts. So once I have more facts, I'll be able to, but I will reach out to you after I talk to transportation and see if we can help. But like I said, I'm not going to be able to make a promise this evening until I have all my facts.
I would appreciate that one. I would appreciate that one. And, um, as I said into my email, um, I know that, when you map out the routes, it's, um, because in the camp, we use an app, and I believe you also use the same, like, the app. And the the location, the elevation of the the roads doesn't really show on the map. And if if coming here in our hill and looking at it like the situation would help you decide, I would appreciate it. And I would appreciate like if you, uh, reach out to me tomorrow after you, um, get the facts.
Yes, that's that's not a problem on my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Triano. And I can attest to the steepness of Starview and Murray. Uh, it's a common running route here, uh, among triathletes. My husband and my daughters have done it numerous times. It's pretty steep. So I'm sure he will help, uh, if he can. Okay, um, I see no other public comments, so a closed public comment. Um, board comment? Any? Mr. Gillette?
All right. So, um, oh, am I unmuted? Good. I I tricked myself. I was actually unmuted. Um, I want to thank, um, uh, Dr. Sosan and, um, Dr. Harris for their service on the board. And I think I speak for the residents of Hillsborough. When I just say again, thank you for your dedication, your hard work over the years. But especially, I want to say something about, uh, Mrs. Haas, who I first met, um, in this room in 2007, I think it was, um, maybe April, we had a candidate forum or candidate debate, uh, for the 2007 election. And it was, uh, 2008, 2008, when I began serving with Mrs. Haas on this board. And I did some math. Uh, Mrs. Stats, you can check me later on my math. Uh, but that's 12 years, eight months. That's like 152 months. That's something like, including our special meetings and other things, probably over 300 meetings, uh, together. Um, first of all, I think that's going to be a record. I don't know any other two board members are going to be together again for 300 meetings. I think board members come and go, uh, don't stay for 15 years like Mrs. Haas has. Don't have that kind of dedication.
Who's counting, Greg?
Uh, right, who knows? But I mean, you usually, I mean, I mean, you know, uh, you're you're of a different generation, maybe. Uh, you know, I, I, look, I'm a little bit of a historian. I went back and I tried to find other board members. And yes, back in the 50s, there were 20-year board members. Sure. And if you go back further than that, there were 30-year board members in Hillsborough. But in the last 30 years, I don't think there've been too many 15-year board members, or even the last 40, or maybe even the last 50, uh, to my, you know, to my knowledge. Uh, when I was first on this board many years ago, um, another board member said to me, something like, um, they looked at me and said, I don't even know why you're on this board. And I looked at that board member and I said, what, what, what do you care? As long as I'm on this board for a noble reason, that should be good enough. And when I think of Mrs. Haas today, I think she's been on this board for 15 years for a noble reason, for many noble reasons. They all have to do with, um, the students of Hillsborough. And so my heartfelt thanks to you, Judy, for your service.
Well, thank you very much, Greg. Really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr..
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you.
I could come back and haunt you, that's for sure. Okay, Mrs. Haas, did you want to say something?
Yeah, well, actually, I wasn't going to say anything. But after that lovely speech by Greg, which I really appreciate, um, I do feel compelled to speak as well as a letter that came in right before the board meeting from Sean Kavanaugh, who's one of our former students, who graciously pointed out that he wants to hear from me tonight, since I have been on this board longer than some of our students have been alive. Um, so with that perspective, I'd really like to thank the public for the opportunity to serve and all the wonderful Board of Ed members who've passed through over the years. Um, I leave with very few regrets and much pride in accomplishing many good things for our kids with our colleagues and with the staff of the school district. Um, I ran for the Board of Ed after two years of budgets were failed, um, in 2002 and 2003. And they were turned down by the community. The community wasn't supporting the board back in those days. Elections were in April and budgets had to be passed. And my son was heading into the high school. And I wasn't going to let the system fall apart. And at some point, people need to stand up and say, if nobody else is going to do anything about it, you gotta do it yourself. Back then, the board consisted of nine men. And I thought adding a mom's voice might be helpful. Uh, 14 years later, in 2018, was the first time in my memory that we had seven women on the board. And I was very proud to be president of that board, which I thought was one of the most productive years ever. Um, looking back over the 15 years, um, I think one of the best things we did was hire Dr. Lisa Antunes as our assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and working with her on educational matters and communication matters. I'd like to think my involvement mattered, um, and contributed to incredible improvement in student achievement, to a complete and cyclical system of curriculum revision and articulation, which used to drive me nuts, uh, to four things that are now hard to imagine ever being without. And were but were a major struggle back in the day, because one was getting a website up, one was getting a parent communication system up, one was a student information system, and one was one-to-one technology, for which I'd like to acknowledge our visionary tech technological guy, Joel Handler, who I have probably always been a source of aggravation to. But I really appreciate all your patience with me and all of your wonderful work. Since then, I've outlasted four superintendents. Um, I attended every graduation, which means that I've seen over 9,000 kids graduate. And I do have one issue with that, because the year that my son graduated, um, as I was walking up to give him his diploma, I understood that there were some other board members who had taken bets on whether or not I was going to give him a hug. And what I'd like to object to now is that anybody actually thought I wouldn't give him a hug, because he still, he was, he still remains my proudest achievement. Um, I've seen tons of great performances and presentations, concerts, sporting events, NHS graduations, senior awards, and recognitions of staff. Um, fast forward to the last three-year term, we were number 15 best school district in New Jersey. We were 30th best place to teach. We were number 26 best place for athletes. We implemented one of the strongest vaping policies in the state. We improved counseling services and focused on social and emotional learning. We expanded AP offerings and concurrent enrollment classes. We conducted a comprehensive review of curriculum content regarding racism, Black history, and LGBTQ contributions. We improved our book list by emphasizing diverse authors and characters. And last summer, we created summer advancement classes for students who wanted to do that. In the area of HR, we joined the second cohort of Rutgers' Labor Management Collaboration Effort, and last year received 1,942 applications for 56 teaching positions that were available, which showed a 5% acceptance rate, and a lot of interest in working in Hillsborough. And very, very important, under Greg's leadership, we conducted a comprehensive facilities assessment review and a thorough value evaluation of our school security needs and passed a resolution, a referendum to address these needs with a minimum impact to our taxpayers. Um, that feels kind of good. But since this feels like a graduation, I feel I need to provide a couple of quotes. At first, I'd like to thank my husband Lloyd and my son Lenny, who have been supportive all these years and put up with a lot of stuff from me over the years. So thank you very much. Um, one of the other pleasures of being on this board was I got to serve in the Somerset County ESC. And in our new career center there, we have a mural on the wall, and it says, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing's going to get better. It's not. And that phrase has always meant a lot to me. And I hope going forward, everybody feels that way and focuses on positive stuff and not ranker. Um, another comment that means a lot to me actually comes from Doctor Who, uh, which is big in my household. And the quote was from the third doctor, um, courage isn't just a matter of not being frightened, you know, it's being afraid and doing what you have to do anyway. And I think of my son, who is a doctor in a very busy hospital in New York through all of this pandemic. And I'm very proud of him. And I'm very proud of people all over the country who are stepping up to meet the horrible challenge of the pandemic. And I hope everybody stays safe. I hope everybody stays productive. And I hope everybody remembers, once the caring and the courage is understood, that you remember that it's not all about you, that it's about the kids, and it's always about what's doing the best for them. They only go through school once, and their experience here will predict much of their future. So I wish the remaining board members best of luck with that. I wish everybody happy holidays and all the best in the new year. And once again, thank you for the experience of being here. Be safe, be vigilant, and go in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Very well said. And, um, I absolutely appreciate your perspective there on so many things and all the accomplishments that have happened during your tenure. Um, and I share a lot of, um, joy in the accomplishments that we've been able, along with our fellow board members, to achieve in the last almost eight years together. Um, I will miss working with you. I will miss working with Dr. Harris and the rest of the board members. Um, you know, I think it's important to note that today is a really incredible day in the world. Not only did it signal the end, the presidential election, um, with the elector, the electoral, college, um, being able, having significant electors to be able to elect our new president, but also with the first immunizations, um, of the COVID-19 vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine, with hopefully the Moderna vaccine, uh, coming into play in the next few, um, weeks. And then the AstraZeneca Oxford one coming in shortly thereafter. So, um, hopefully we will see an end to all of, uh, this pandemic and, uh, stuff that's been going on over the last nine months. I know it has not been easy for people. There's been lots of dissension among which way to go. None of the decisions that have been made have been easy ones. But I do think it does, uh, it should give us all pause that, um, what you said, that we have to focus on what is best for the students. Um, and, you know, I, I think that I can't leave without doing one last service for this community. And that is to say that, it seems that both across our country and within our town, a great many of us have lost the ability to tell the difference between truth and fiction. Um, and it's even worse that many of us who know the difference are willing to spread lies as a mean to an end. And this really has to stop within our community and within our nation in order for us to achieve anything. Um, we, you know, we want to collaborate, but collaboration is built on trust. And I think the happenings of the last few months have shown that that trust is just not there. Um, it takes good faith, operating in good faith, and that faith has been broken. And so I hope that as we go forward, um, we all consider what's truly best for Bureau, for Borough, that we should be truthful and honest, that we should treat everyone with respect, whether we agree or disagree. And especially, we should not work to assassinate the characters of those working for the betterment of our community. Um, we must all keep what is best for students and what we do. And I hope we can all take some time over the holiday season to reflect on this. And maybe each of us consider how we can best do that. Um, with that, uh, unless there are other comments, I want to, um, thank everybody, uh, for their support this year, my fellow board members. I want to thank, um, the public for putting their trust in me for the seven or eight years I've been on the board. Um, again, the board is plays a really important role. And we are, um, all volunteers. We don't earn anything except the undying support and love from our community. And yes, that's a joke. Um, but honestly, it has been a pleasure to serve. And, uh, mostly, it's been an honor and privilege to serve not only our community, but to work with the very dedicated and student-focused administrators like Dr. Antunes, like Dr. Schiff before her, um, Mr. Mahmood, Dr. Feltry, and the rest of the central administration team. My thanks especially go out to Kate Shanessi, who really is the heart of this district and really keeps the board moving and running. Um, Mrs. Teresa Klein, Donna Volpe, for their assistance with our committees, uh, Mrs. Ashley San Giuliano, and Mr. Callahan for their work for the board. I've learned so much from all of you. Um, even when we disagree, I hope that, um, we have built mutual respect for each other's positions. I especially have enjoyed my service on the education committee and the wonderful conversations I was part of there. So, um, with that, I want to end this year and my time on the board by wishing everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season, and hopefully a light at the end of this very, very long tunnel. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Ms., Dr. Harris, would you like to say something? Please?
There, finally unmuted. I would like to say thank you to my fellow board members for all of the camaraderie and the work that we've accomplished together. I would like to say thank you to the community for the opportunity. Anytime I get to work for students, that always has a special place in my heart. So thank you very much for that opportunity. Everyone have a nice holiday. Try to stay safe and socially distanced if you can. And good luck in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Good luck in 2021, everyone.